All right. Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to the Ward Two and Ward Four Town Hall Meeting. Focus tonight is basically emergency preparedness as we start going into the hotter times of the year, our summer that also kind of kicks off what we what we begrudgingly know as fire season. So a lot of good topics to cover tonight. And appreciate you guys all churning out. I guess on a side note, I've only actually been in this room one other time. Has anybody else been in this room before? Did you guys all get seatbelt tickets that you had to go to a class to get it? Great. So at any rate, we're gonna, before we introduce the council, let's, I just want to introduce the staff we have up here tonight, who are going to be doing a lot of the presentation and letting you know what what's going on from Medford as far as fire goes. At the very end, we have our emergency manager, Aaron Ott. We have Tanner Farrington, Fire Marshal. We have our police representative today, Sheriff Arnold. Fire Eric Thompson. Who else do we have? Eric Mitten, Legal Counsel, John Vile, Public Works Director, and Tim Stevens here with Parks. So by the way, I am the Mayor, Mike Sarazinski, and we'll introduce, let the council introduce themselves, Kevin.
Well, thank you. I'm Kevin Keating on the Southeast Ward, Ward Four, and I was just elected most recently. So thank you very much. And I'll introduce Nick Card.
Thanks, Kevin. I'm the other Ward Four Counselor. I'm also serving as Council President. I was elected in 22. John?
Hi, John Quinn. I'm one of the two counselors from Ward Two, which is Southwest Medford. Zach?
Zach Smith, Ward Two Counselor with John and Ward Two. And I was elected the same year as Nick in 2022.
All right, thanks. Okay, so how how we'll we'll do this tonight is we're going to get an update on some some of the more important topics that we wanted to share tonight from staff. Everybody get a questionnaire question option. So if you have a question, KJ or other staff is around the room, you can hand it to them. If you hear a question and you want a follow up, we want to make sure we get through all of them. So if you you can raise your hand and I can call on you, but at some point, if we need to move on to the next question, we'll do that. Also, what we're here to do is get information out. We're here to be accommodating and kind of expect the same out of the participants. So have some decorum. We're all here to practice decorum and make this as smooth as possible. If at the end of the evening, by the way, and you want to come up and have a conversation, people will still be up here. So don't feel like if you don't get your question answered during during what we would, you know, the open time, there is opportunity to come up here, meet with staff or meet with one of the other counselors. So yeah, don't feel rushed on that. Um, I think that's it. So who's up first for a presentation tonight? Eric Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Thompson, your Fire Chief. First of all, I want to say thank you for coming. Thank you for coming and showing interest in all the amazing things that staff is doing, but also the things that your city counselors are allowing us to do and supporting us. And so tonight's presentations and conversations are around preparedness. And really, preparedness is it's not just for fire. And one thing that we look at at the City of Medford is generalize all hazard preparedness. And fire is just one aspect of that. And so whenever we talk about preparedness, we're talking about the daily emergencies and we're talking about the large scale emergencies and disasters. And it's important that we stay focused on on all of that. And just really quick, your daily operations, your council has allowed us to build a new fire station. So that process is is going on right now. We're expanding Station 13 on Highland. We've added EMS squads to our fleet. So now we're, we have specialized smaller EMS units, which allow us to have more availability for our fire staffing and our fire responses. So our daily staffing capabilities have improved because we're a growing city. Our demands are growing. So just that's a fun fact that we have a lot of general improvements that are happening right now to our service delivery. We we try very hard to stay prepared year round. And so really, the the efforts for preparedness, they don't stop. Just because, yes, it's about to become fire season the first week of June, probably June 1. You can expect fire season to go into effect, but really, the preparation never stops. We train, we keep our certifications up, we keep our equipment up. We're very fortunate this year that we've added a brush truck, a new brush truck that was from the state. That was a grant award. So that didn't cost our citizens anything. So we received the vehicle plus all the equipment. And a couple of weeks ago, we received the great news that they're giving us grant dollars for staffing upgrades. And so we're gonna, we're gonna be able to improve our staffings during high and extreme fire season times. And so it's, it's really nice. Every station has a brush rig now. We received grant funding also to increase our daily fire staffing. So our crews have four people on them, which allow us to get a brush truck out the door and an engine out the door. And so we can do that. A station can handle calls. Used to, we were taking multiple stations and now we're doing things with less resources needed. The mutual aid agreements, I think it's, it'd be good for everybody to understand that we can't do everything alone. Right? And so we saw in 2020 during the Alameda fire, it's important that we work with our neighbors, right? And so our collaboration, it's ongoing. It doesn't stop. We train with the neighbors. We have similar procedures for how we operate. We, we have the same type of equipment. Everybody in Jackson County and Josephine County, we have mutual aid agreements with. And so if we start running low on resources, we can keep asking for assistance. And then when it goes beyond that, we can get regional help from the state. And in return, we also provide help to others. So you know, whenever large fires happen across the state and there's conflicts that happen, we go help folks in need because we know what it feels like to need help, right? And so they offer us help and we provide them help. So it's really the Jackson County and Josephine County Fire Service, we collaborate all the time. We meet monthly, actually, that way that, you know, we're not meeting somebody for the first time when there's an incident. So we build that and that trust, we build the confidence, we maintain the relationships, and we have those agreements in place that when the bad day comes, we're prepared for it. So I can keep talking for hours and I probably shouldn't. So I'm gonna, I think it's, it is Mr. Men's turn to talk about updates on the State Wildfire Map. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eric Mitten, our fabulous City Attorney.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Let's see, is this thing, is this thing working? Okay, awesome. I'm Eric Mitten, your City Attorney. So I wanted to give you an update on the State Wildfire Hazard Map. And one of the key words in that phrase is state. This is not a local initiative. But for those who don't know, in 2021, the State of Oregon passed Senate Bill 762. They did a lot of different things related to wildfire preparedness. It allocated some money. Um, it looked at home hardening and defensible space rules. One thing it did, though, was set up what's called the State Wildfire Hazard Map Program, where they drew a map where the under state formulas, it categorized different, different areas in different hazard categories. This proved to be very controversial with a lot of residents, a lot of concerns about what effect it would have on property values, on insurance rates. And so as an update, this year, the Oregon Legislature is considering Senate Bill 83. It's already passed the Senate. It's in the House of Representatives right now. And what that does is it actually repeals the State Wildfire Hazard Map. And then the rules about defensible space and home hardening, instead of being a state mandate, would instead become model codes that local jurisdictions could choose to adopt if they made sense in that local community. And so this is not yet law. It's still got to get through the Oregon House and then be signed by the governor. But we're tracking it. We're watching it very closely. We recognize that a lot of our residents are very concerned about the State Wildfire Hazard Map and unintended consequences of that map. And so we're watching it very closely to see what happens. If Senate Bill 83 passes, there will certainly be some policy discussions at a local level in terms of whether or not the model rules related to home hardening and defensible space make sense for our community as they're drafted. So that's where we are right now. There's still more to happen in Salem, but we're watching it very closely. And just wanted to make sure everyone was updated on that process because we know that map has been a point of contention.
Good evening. Aaron Ott, your City Emergency Manager. So I want to talk about, hopefully, every single person in this room got bugged by me today. And we had a Jackson Alerts, at least one, and we did it in different modalities so we can try to find it the best way that you can receive messaging. So you should get a, gotten a voicemail with your wonderful radio voice that I'm talking to you right now. You should have got an email. You should have got text message, whatever you have signed up for. If you did not afterwards, please come up to me so we can get you signed up. Some of the big questions I've had today after doing the test is, hey, I got it in English and in Spanish. Well, we are multicultural. We need to be able to communicate to everybody. And that's why you have the first sentence in English, second sentence in Spanish, to transverse across those barriers again to meet everybody's needs. The next question was, hey, I moved. The majority of people. What I was very happy with this year, there was not any phone calls as of yet. So don't prove me wrong of, hey, you messed up. I didn't get anything. One of the other questions was, I got two notifications, one for Zone 13 and 117. So I pull up that information. I said, well, it looks like you had your mom or your brother's house, which was in that other zone in there, which you can have up to five addresses. And it was usually that, that was the number one reason was they had it either their work location, their church location, or another relative in there. So the system works. Again, if you're not signed up for it, we we test it once a year. So we're not here to bug you with it and indulge into your life, but we do want a way to communicate with you in the time of need. And as Chief said, it's not just for wildfires. We have I-5 that runs up and down, right in beautiful, the middle of our city. God willing, hope it never happens, but we could have a hazardous material incident. We could have an earthquake. We are in a subduction zone. You know, we could have some real bad weather and, you know, be stranded here in this nice little island of the valley. So you know, we have different types of hazards, but obviously, fire season is upon us and we're definitely taking steps to get ready.
There you go, sir.
I apologize for, these guys all have to put up with me and my my hijinks here. Okay. First plan or first question is, are there any plans to adopt residential construction standards to make homes more fire resistant, such as fire resistant siding and roofing, raising foundation vents above grade, and fire tampers in eve vents? I will say that we do have standards on on these things right now in certain areas denigrated as wildfire prone zones. But maybe Tanner, I think this sounds like a good one for you.
Sure. So as, sorry, Tanner Farrington, your Fire Marshal, welcome again. Good evening. So as our attorney, Mr. Eric Mitten, mentioned, with the repeal of the State Wildfire Map, that sets it up for locals to make a policy decision on what they would like to do for defensible space and and home hardening. So the state, as soon as the wildfire map process started several years ago, the state agencies, so Building Code Division for Home Hardening and Oregon State Fire Marshal for Defensible Space, started developing standards. So they're taking those efforts and they're, they're, as long as the legislation goes through and the wildfire map gets repealed, they will adopt state standards that can be adopted locally. So what that would look like is on the building side, there would be a policy discussion and then possibly a decision to adopt those state standards for home hardening and have that apply locally. And for those of you who don't know, which I'm sure everybody does, home hardening means creating resiliency against wildfire for structure. So vents and roof and and those sorts of things. So that's the building side. On the defensible space side, again, that's OSFM. And that's basically setting up the space around a home to be resilient to wildfire. So it sets up that home to be more survivable if there's a wildfire. And then also allows us access to get to the structure to do our very best to protect it. So again, there was this direction that that was going to be handled by the state. And now it looks like with the State Wildfire Map being repealed, there would be no State Wildfire Map to where the state standards would apply. So again, goes back to a potential local policy decision where I think we'll be looking for input from the public. So hopefully that answers the question. Anybody else have additional input?
I guess tagging on to that, we had another question that sort of, sort of is related. So is the city recommend or someone recommending fire barriers around houses, which we've kind of covered that a bit? But one of the specific questions is a note that pea gravel would be much safer for children and windows. And some yards are full of this size stones. I think that's a probably a very valid point. I do not know that we are doing anything specific to that, but Tanner has some thoughts.
Sure. So even, even without state standards or local standards being adopted, there's practical solutions that can help set up your, your home to be more resilient against wildfire. So there's two typical ways that a fire is going to attack your home. One of those ways is direct flame impingement. So there's fire that's either transferring heat or direct flames to your home. So that's one avenue. The second and the the one that becomes challenging and kind of sets us up to have multiple structures start and then those structures and vegetation spread to others and get out ahead of our resources is the embers. So we get a wildfire, especially with some winds, similar to what we had with Alameda. You get some fire going, then you get embers. Those travel potentially miles and those are starting fires. And then those are going and then those start additional fires. And that's where it becomes a challenge. The way you can set yourself up to have as much success as possible, it's never a guarantee. But the way to set your property up for success is the first focusing, by first focusing on the first five feet. So what that looks like is setting up the area around your home to keep those embers from getting in. So if you have bark and ember can land in the bark, start smoldering in the bark, get into like juniper or grasses, and then go up ladder fuels to some bigger stuff or have enough heat generate to get into siding or windows. And so that that area within five feet, having non combustible materials makes a huge difference. Having a separation between kind of the lower level vegetation or landscaping materials and vegetation of the home, that's also important. There's some very low cost alternatives that are kind of the key to start with. There's some higher cost options as well. And we've got a lot of those resources on our website that go through those kind of two different pieces, both the home and the space around around the home. So those are just a couple of examples. But regardless of any requirements being being adopted, anyone that's interested, there are low cost and some even medium to high cost options for setting your home up for success.
Uh, next question is evacuation plans for Hillcrest. This person lives on a essentially on a, on a private road with six, six residences. The, the private road is parallel to Hillcrest and that is their only access out. How do we get out?
How do you get out? Well, hopefully you plan ahead and you have some ideas of, is there another way? Is there a dirt road? Is there some other avenue that you can get out? If not, then it's getting out when the first puff of smoke or the first warning is there. You're not waiting till the level three. You're going right then and at the moment. Obviously, with new subdivisions coming in, we definitely are working with planning to make sure that we have more than just hopefully one way in and one way out. One way out is a, is a concern and you need to basically make sure that you have, understand that. Yes. So yeah, so if we had, you know, God forbid, a fire come over the hill and we had to evacuate the east side of the city, we would immediately work with our Public Works Department, which is a key component of our emergency response plan to shut down the dual way traffic and we would open both lanes to get out. We would not let the public getting back in. I know some will be upset. I gotta get my dog, I gotta get family. You're gonna have to rely on us to get that for you, but we're gonna need to get everybody out. We can't have this stagnation. So we do have plans like that in place.
And I guess tagging on to that, um, we kind of take for granted McAndrews Road has extends all the way up to Hillcrest today. But that's, that was, it's, well, unfortunately, I get to date myself yesterday. It was 25 years ago when that was done. And that was done, a big push of that was because there was no, that was, Hillcrest was it for everything. And now you have McAndrews. There and when we said that, there was always Cherry Lane. But as, as growth increases up there, Cherry Lane will become a much bigger exit. There's some other options for exits that'll be planned with growth. I'm familiar with your exact location and that predates all of the additional efforts that have been done. I don't want to speak for Aaron, but I think his point of being ready to go, because maybe if you're, you're identifying yourself as a higher risk, and I think that's, that's smart. And maybe you could work with the city. I don't want to put too much words in your mouth, Aaron, but on how you could be maybe the whole point of getting out early rather than waiting until you've got one choice for, you know, no choice. So that, I think, I think advanced preparation becomes a lot more incumbent upon you and your neighbors on that one. It's certainly something that I would explore with the city for, for how you could alleviate that. All that being said, there is certainly much more options than there was, was before, which is good. Okay. During an emergency, and I'm sorry, this was written by a left-handed person, so I gotta work on it. What do you do for people to get out of their homes when, let's say, hearing impaired, hearing impaired and deaf persons? Because particularly during the Alameda fire, there were, there were people that the news did not provide captions. I think that's probably the best way. How do we deal with getting information to to hearing impaired?
I think that's a great question. That's another thing about going back to our messaging is why we do different modalities. And like the testing today, we did it in both the English and Spanish for our hearing impaired. We had text message, we had voice message, we had email messages. So we're trying to meet that. Obviously, you know, I work with UNATE and things like that, other groups that have special needs to communicate with. If you have ideas of how to better do that, I'm always open to hear that and to meet your needs and stuff. But we do try to use different modalities. As far as press releases and and things like that at the Alameda fire, yeah, you're absolutely right. There was no sign language or interpreter capabilities that were present. That's obviously a lesson learned that we would definitely incorporate as quick as we could here in Medford if we ever had that happen again.
And I guess tying on to that, wait and updates via phone. Essentially, I think that's covered a little bit in the, the, the Jackson County Alerts, which I'm gonna mess this up. So guys, somebody's gonna have to fix it for me. I believe you can sign up for it right off of your, your sheet that you have with your smartphone. And there must be a better or a different way in case, in case that's a little bit of a struggle. We'll let Aaron kind of share that as well. But basically, how does the information get out? What routes are going to be used? And kind of tied back into, will this be on the TV as well? So Aaron?
Yeah, I think the first thing to know is people always say, okay, so you told me to leave, where do I go? Our first priority is obviously life and safety. And we want to get those people out. On the backend, we're starting to work with our Parks Department or somebody like that saying, okay, what, what facility or what parking lot can we open up to tell people to go to? So that might be a message second or third down the line, but the first message is the immediate action we want you to take. So if it was me, I'd be like, okay, where's the big parking lot? You know, Home Depot, Lowe's, go to the mall, you know, get in the big area that can't burn and you got open space and wait for that next messaging. The expo will not always be the evacuation point for the county. You know, the second day of Alameda, there was a fire that where they had to evacuate the expo. So we always need to have contingency plans of other ideas of what to do. I think, what was any other part of the question that I missed?
I think it was also how, you know, making sure that the TV stations would be providing the information as well. So we have the Jack, we had the community, I'm sorry, sir. Oh, and where to go, but.
Where to go, it really depends on what we have available. You know, we have a, you know, Rogue X is a beautiful facility, but it might have a car show or something going on or volleyball tournament. But again, we have some more options and it's really where can we get a large group of people, some services and a place to stay in refuge for a time being. Our main goal is to get you back to your house as quick as we can, put the fire out and get you back there. But again.
And I guess this is a follow up. Are you the left-handed one? Kind of speaking again to serving vulnerable populations during a wildfire, what plans do the city have to support the homeless population in emergency situations?
So the homeless population is very resilient. So we have shelter notifications that we put out for when we have extreme weather events. We have over 2,000 people who are signed up for that and they get the messaging and the word of mouth goes very quickly. For any kind of disaster, any kind of expectation, we obviously reach out to them to have them do the same thing. Sign up for a citizen alert and stuff. They might not have a physical address that they can definitely put down, but where are they mainly at? Or they could put up to five addresses. So it's one of those things that we try to meet them where they, where they, what's mess, what's the best way to communicate with them? And then help them. And then the city has done a lot for our homeless population with the livability team, with outreach programs, with the different navigation center. I mean, so we have a lot of different avenues to help, help them through that.
Okay, now we have a question for our council. The specific question is, when are you going to fix the bicycle lanes on East Main Street? Question mark, remove all caps. Probably, well, certainly we've been discussing that and maybe you heard or haven't heard, but there's multiple options that have been provided by Public Works Department to take a look at. We have narrowed those down from, from a lot to to a few. And this is a perfect opportunity for each counselor to, to talk about their favorite choice.
Great. Um, this is one of the issues that, that, can you guys hear me okay? This is one of the issues that that really prompted me in part to run for council. And I personally, I want to see it go back to the way it was. And you know, I've been talking with members of council. There, there are a few other options. Some cost more than others. And I'll let Nick speak to, to how he believes on this. But personally, I think the easiest, best method is to go back to the way it was.
Unless, unless you don't want them to, okay. So yeah, as Kevin said, that we've been looking at some different options. You know, one of the things that I see with Main Street is it's really important that Main Street is an important thoroughfare for the community. We built Main Street and put a ton of traffic on Main Street many years ago, before we've built out some of the other important connecting infrastructure around there. And today, the traffic volumes on Main Street are very low. And so I look at this as an opportunity. Now, the big question I've got is how much is this going to cost? This is one of the things that Public Works is looking into. But I would love to see us take Main Street back to being a two-way street and really try to reinvest in a beautification project around Main Street. We have a ton of footprint there with three, basically three travel lanes. There are opportunities for us to add a lot more parking to Main Street. If we made it a two-way street, we could add more sort of beautification with like a central barrier. There's a lot of different ideas around that. My biggest goal would be to do that. But I want to make sure we're going to do that in a way that makes sense. If it's going to cost. makes sense. If it's gonna cost us an arm and a leg to do it, I'm not gonna put an arm and a leg, or I'm not gonna support putting an arm and a leg into just our one Main Street. Uh, so I'm really interested to see kind of what that looks like. And I don't think it's gonna be as expensive as Public Works. I don't know, John, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Uh, do you have your hard hat ready? Um, but, uh, failing that, I think, again, you know, one of the things we hear again and again from, uh, vendors downtown and people who are going there is a struggle around parking. And so instead of having all of that space being taken up by the, the bike track, I think there's ideas. Mike Kurlinger, who is from Ward One Northeast Medford, he keeps talking about the parking plus option, doing a diagonal parking on Main Street. That would give us a, a massive amount of additional parking. And I think if the two-way option isn't feasible, that's a great option, and that wouldn't require us doing a whole lot of infrastructure other than just some painting, uh, a few ramps here or there. So, uh, you know, we'll see when we get the, the results back. I think the options for us to relook at Main Street are there. Again, the traffic volumes are really low. I do not want to see us take road infrastructure that we need and then sort of bastardize that into something that's gonna hurt our community. I don't see that as a problem with Main Street. I see an opportunity with Main Street. And so I'm, I'm excited for something that's gonna either increase parking or increase that downtown community feel.
Well, I generally agree with Mr. Keating. I kind of like it the way it was before. Unfortunately, I have the most personal direct experience with it. My, uh, my wife had a fender bender in our brand new truck, uh, on that road because the visibility is not very good. So I feel your pain. The issue is not only what we build, but whether what we build, if we change it, which I think we will, um, requires us to give back the state grant. So we have to look at both how much it costs to do what everyone decides to do. And then do we also have to give back four to $500,000 to the state? Do they come and ask for it? Do they not? Can we make it so they don't have grounds to ask for it? Can we not while still pleasing everyone? So that's the balance. We have to figure out, we know we don't like it, most people. We have to figure out how much do we not like it? Um, after the fender bender, I disliked it a lot. Um, and how much are we willing to pay to fix it? Because every time you spend money on one thing, you don't spend money on something else. And I'm not suggesting we shouldn't do anything, and I'm not suggesting we won't address it, but that's what we have to balance when we figure it out. So it's actually fairly complicated to weigh all the options. Ma'am? Do you? Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I echo both, uh, John and Nick. I, uh, when I saw that option of the two-way, that made me very curious. And, uh, you know, in my mind, I was just thinking, I didn't want to see, because I'm with you guys, that, you know, I'm not a huge fan of it, especially after all the complaints, but, um, you know, I didn't want to see us pay a bunch of money to change it back the way it was, just to change it again. So my, in my mind, I was thinking, you know, if we're gonna spend the money, might as well make it the, the correct one this time. So, um, yeah, I'm definitely open to options.
But what really terrifies me is not personally, but for the public and particularly for the prayer, is that we now see these very heavy electric bikes that really belong on the road. They should be on the road only sometimes taking the bicycle lane, sometimes taking to the sidewalk even. If those things hit you, they're gonna take you out. They're seriously heavy and they're moving along quite a cliff. I'm also the ground, the heat graph guy, and I just like to say a little more about that. If you were around 15 years ago, when there was an incident in Ashland, uh, where, um, the Halloween festivities got out of town, and they had closed the street like they always did, but then they opened it. And they sent a couple crews down like they always did, slowly, you know, announcing, you know, in a nice calm way, you know, it's very hardly, you know, jackbooted bugs down in Ashland, right? Everybody says that out of their minds. But what happened was that there are people had taken these fist-sized stones from around the city tree plantings. And they had picked them up to the second story and they took out two police crews by raining them down on their roof. And those things were unusable after they'd done that. So they stopped, they stopped them. But I've seen these big stones of mine across the city as we tell people to take out their lives. We need, we need a building from them.
Okay, so perspective-wise, which is what do we do with planter strips, particularly when we start to, uh, look at water conservation or, or whatever? How does that come out? And you get these weird patchworks of, here's moonscape, here's, you know, uh, what are those? Lavenders or whatever. So I mean, that's, that's an interesting point. And I know that we have, uh, habits on, on, on a goal to kind of, kind of take a look at that, that aesthetic quality of, of how these planter strips and, but more specifically and broader, what the streetscape looks like in, in the community. So it's a, it's a, certainly a point, uh, point taken and something that we're, we're taking a peek at. And I appreciate your, your thoughts on that. I mean, with that said, you know, in DC when, when they, okay, yeah. Sure. So back and, and specific to that, you know, DC ran into that issue with all these beautiful cobblestone streets where people tore those up and did the same thing. So, um, that gets to be, gets to be sketchy. Okay, Kevin, you were being very patient. So there's, you remember what you were gonna say?
Yeah, no, I do. Thank you. Uh, there's something I wanted to add here. It's like, you know, um, this is a great group of counselors I'm with and I really appreciate the level of discussion we have. But if there's any issue that needs public input, it would be how you guys want Main Street to be. There's very few things that are as, um, both important and as visible to almost everybody in town as that. So I appreciate all of you guys coming tonight. Um, and I just hope you keep up that level of participation. Feel free to email us and get your viewpoints known to the, to the council members.
And, and kind of with that said, uh, is there any more comments or, um, regarding Main Street? Yes, ma'am. Great. Another Main Street. Yes, sir.
Well, not Main Street, just go ahead.
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
Uh, strength of the heart, what is the city's plan, plan to deal with the surrounding fuel that are one of the main, main concerns regarding cars? Like the, for example, the greenway. Are there any plans to reduce that fuels, that field that's sitting there or mitigate any means of,
All right. Uh, my name is Tim Stevens. I'm the Park and Open Space Manager. Uh, to answer your question directly, yes, we, yes, we do have. Uh, can you hear me now? Okay. Um, so to answer your question directly, the, the answer is yes. Um, so we have, we're fortunate that we have a couple substantial buckets of money that we can use to, to use to pay contractors as well as we use our staff to help, um, abate fire fuels along the Bear Creek Greenway. And so currently, right now, we have efforts going on at Lithian Drive Way Fields. We also have efforts going on, um, the full seven miles of the greenway. So, um, that's just one of many areas that we're abating.
Does that include cleaning up the areas and reducing the fuels or?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, MPD has made a huge impact. Um, they're heavily enforcing the greenway right now. So the illegal camp numbers have significantly gone down. That's a major fire fuel source for the greenway. So, um, I can't take full credit for it. Um, Metford Police is just doing a phenomenal job enforcing. Um, we're also, um, we also have management plans in place. So we have a Bear Creek Fire Management Place Plan that we're using to advocate for additional resources. Uh, maybe Aaron can talk about the FEMA grant that we applied for.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So yeah, we, we have attached and we've gotten, uh, several grants, um, to help with mitigation efforts, uh, through Oregon State Fire Marshal, uh, and things like that. Uh, we do have some federal requests in, um, there's some federal changes for those who don't know in DC. So we'll see what happens. Um, you know, with that, I still am very hopeful, uh, that we can do that. But to answer your question, yeah, we're really trying to remove ladder fuels. There are a lot of restrictions when we talk about, uh, the wet waterways and, uh, not inhabiting uh, any kind of species there. So there are some restrictions that we have to, to follow. Yeah.
But Bear Creek itself is a really, you know, dark conditions. A lot of fish, a lot of fields in the water, land trash, and those are not being moved.
Right. Some of them is where you can't remove it to the fish and game, uh, for habitat, uh, to make sure that the salmon have breeding grounds and the shade and things like that. But there's other areas that we can do that and we, our goal is to try to remove all non-native species. And that would be the biggest thing, to get it back to what the native land has originally.
And there's a couple more efforts also that kind of go beyond our, our footprint. So to the south, the Ashland watershed, and they've received a couple million dollars worth of grand dollars. So they're doing a, a lot of fuel mitigation work all around in the south. And also to the west, City of Jacksonville got some grand dollars. And so there's a lot of efforts surrounding Metford, uh, to reduce, uh, the fuels and doing fuel mitigation work. And of course, a lot of that is done in the winter time and in the springs. And so just, you'll see some, some controlled burns. So you'll see smokes coming up in, in the hillsides. That's all right now, that's all controlled fire. Okay. And so there's not any active fire right now. Uh, also, uh, in, in Tim's shop, um, Prescott Park. So there's also a Prescott Park, uh, Fire Management Plan. And then we have contracts with ODF to help with some fuel mitigation work. Uh, we do fire breaks, um, between the homes in Prescott Park, uh, fire breaks on the greenway as well. ODF helps us, um, with the fire breaks. And so that gives us a, an opportunity to get our suppression resources, uh, down on the greenway. And, and we, you know, we, before Alameda, we never did those fire breaks on the greenway. So now, um, about in a couple of weeks, we'll be doing those of work, both on the north side and the south side, uh, of the greenway. So.
And I guess specific that as well, Chief. Um, I, I've, I shouldn't ever say a number that I don't remember, but there was something like 200-plus fires on the greenway that, that Medford Fire responded to. I'm gonna say this is a, a 2019-ish number. Uh, it was pretty extensive. And, and at that time, we really didn't have the gear to, um, go after that. Most of those fires were human caused. So I'm gonna let Chief talk a little bit about better response that happens down there. And then, um, we'll let, uh, we'll give Trevor an opportunity to speak here about efforts to, uh, maybe prevent those from, from actually even starting.
Trevor really wants to speak. Uh, let's, let's talk about the response, uh, our response capabilities to the greenway. So we have now, uh, which we did not have before, we have what's called a UTV. So it's like an all-terrain vehicle. So it's a smaller, uh, six-wheel, uh, vehicle that we can get directly on the greenway quickly. Uh, so before, we just had the very large, uh, brush trucks and then the engines. But you can't really drive an engine on the greenway. It doesn't really work out very well. And so, so now we, we place strategically on the north side and the south side, those UTV units. And so we're able to gain access very fast. And so the whole goal is to get there quickly, uh, and, and to get water on the problem very soon. Um, with all the amazing efforts of the livability team, our encampments have drastically decreased. And so a, a lot of the fires that we were having, uh, unfortunately, were human-caused fires. And we had a lot of encampments. I mean, campfires would get out and just accidents would happen. We, uh, had tent fires. It was just a lot of problems. And then we had a tremendous amount of fuel, uh, because of all the, the trash and all the garbage. And so with the efforts of our livability team, cleaning up the encampments, uh, we do not hurt the garbage. We do not have that, um, that type of fire load, uh, like we did have. Um, and then with the efforts of the, uh, reduction in the fuel mitigation work, you know, cleaning out the blackberries, doing the mowing, trimming some trees, um, but that is regulated. You can't just go in there and do whatever you want because fish and game has rules. You have to protect the riparian areas. There's a lot of stipulations. And so it's, it's not just going out there with the weed eater or a lawnmower and cleaning up. It's a little more technical than that. Um, but our response capabilities, um, have drastically improved in the last four years. And our fires, as the mayor said, was in the 200s. Now it's below 50. So it's drastic improvements.
The chief has taken the feather right out of my cap. I was gonna be the one talking about the livability team and trying to get all the applause. So, anyway, my name's Trevor Arnold. I'm the Deputy Chief of Police and, uh, I've been with the Police Department for a long time. I was promoted to Lieutenant in 2019 and it was at that time, we created what's called the livability team. And at that time, we decided to dedicate three officers that would be focused on homeless outreach, connecting homeless to services and our community service providers, and really focusing on the downtown corridor and the Bear Creek Greenway because it, it, um, had, had gotten a little messy. Uh, I'll say that. Um, your question about the, the items in the creek, the, the non-native items, I, I thought, uh, shopping carts had always been part of the greenway. I've, I've been with Medford PD for 25 years. Some of them have been there a while. So, uh, but we're working on that still. Uh, so anyway, the, the, when the livability team started in 2019 and we're able to connect with some of the, the homeless individuals living along the greenway, that was a problem we noticed that was a, a major issue with fire and, and fire safety is, as warming fires would pop up, not just in the winter time, but even through the summer. And if you have a, a cooler day and warming fires as, as a camp would either be occupied or become unoccupied during the days, folks would leave, those, those things would smolder and continue to grow and became quite an issue. So we were really happy to work with the fire department and, and for them to get these UTVs because I had, I had cops out there in patrol cars or on bicycles with little fire extinguishers that weren't putting out some of these fires. So, um, having that resource available to us has been great. Uh, the livability team has grown from those three officers to now six officers, uh, full-time, a corporal and a sergeant, as well as three community service officers. So it's, it's actually become bigger than some of our patrol teams. Um, and I hear about that from the patrol teams, uh, where all the love is, and that's with the livability team. But they're really doing some phenomenal work at, at, um, really connecting people to resources and, and getting them off the greenway and which, which helps not just with the fire, but with a lot of safety, um, life safety issues that, that pop up along the greenway. So, uh, um, we continue to work on that. And yeah, like, uh, Chief Thompson was talking about our, our encampment surveys that we do every six months. We've, uh, we've noticed have dropped the, the current encampments down to below 10 along the greenway. And, uh, the entire length of the greenway is patrolled every day by the livability team throughout the entire stretch of Medford. So, um, really able that we're able to go from end to end and, and cover that every single day.
And, and so in addition to, to tagging on to that, you, you should know that the city pursues, uh, every opportunity we can to do, to do, uh, load reduction and, and, and habitat restoration in there. Um, there's also been, um, some work going on about the possibility of creating what's, what's called a Greenway District. Um, I think all the counselors here took a, took a tour from start to finish to check that out. Um, there's a lot of spots on the, on, on the greenway itself that look great and others that are not so much. And there's some interesting challenges that come with that. Um, I don't know, uh, Nick or anybody want to kind of, kind of talk about greenway? Plus also maybe the camping ordinances that got put in place that help with that?
So on the greenway, to, to the mayor's point, there are parts of the greenway that are amazing. And when I did the tour, I, I mean, it, it really changed my perspective on the greenway. It's something that I would definitely encourage everyone to get out. I mean, it's, I know the work that we're doing, but I also see the numbers about the amount of trash that we pull out of the greenway and the problems and the issues. And what I realized, having, you know, gone through the greenway, there's a lot of it that is not visible from any road or any way. And then it is wonderful. Our Parks and Rec team does a great job. But then there's other parts of the greenway that are owned privately, they're owned, other different jurisdictions. And these are the parts of the greenway that we see when you drive down I-5. They're the parts of the greenway that you see when you cross over on 62. I mean, these are, these are some of the really bad spots. I mean, these are, these are some of the really bad spots. So one of the thoughts that we had with the Greenway District, and this doesn't solve exactly the private issue, but how do we provide a sustainable source of funding to try to do that? There are pros and cons to this. I know no one really wants to have more property taxes for things. At the same time, the Greenway, I think, is a pretty unique resource. I'm not sure where I stand. I can't tell you that I would vote for a Greenway District personally. But I definitely understand why people are talking about it. But, you know, one of the things that we've done in Medford from a council perspective and a policy perspective, and really I think we have to give Eric Mitten here credit for a lot of this. When we got, there was a set of court cases that then got codified into state law. So some of you may have heard of Boise v. Martin. This was a case that also the grants passed, went all the way to the Supreme Court on. Well, a lot of these laws got codified by the state legislature. And we were all sort of operating in this world of like, we can't do anything. But obviously we had to do something about this. And so what we were able to do was to come up with a definition for some of these terms that were new in the state law. And, and the way that sort of works is if no one's defined them, we kind of get to define them. That's one of the, the cool things about being a legislative body. And so we were able to change some of these camping ordinances to define established campsites and give us in our livability team, the tools and the teeth to actually be able to address some of this camping. And, you know, to me, one of the outcomes that I'm so proud of that we were able to achieve is we have basically zero veteran homelessness in Jackson County anymore. And that was something that we faced in a terrible, that was a terrible problem during COVID. So I, yes, sir, I see your hand up there.
Could I tell you of my experience? And I came here and find out. Thanks. Came here, tried to find out if it was occurring briefly, without the guys face over. I woke up in the morning, smoke. Dude, and I want your land. A few hours later, I had was ashes. People were trying to evacuate. Spreading everywhere, it's just embers in the red carpet. Round out, something else, parking lots. The insurance companies smoked their roofs. Wild bankruptcy. When it came time to reveal, larger insurance companies said, we're not insured here anymore. We're insured for right out of here. So I guess, I'm saying, please support either the map or the standards that turn the area into an area which the insurance companies will recognize as a larger area insurable. If you don't get insurance, and if we don't adopt a state account or local standards to make the area more vibrant, you're getting the insurance.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Thank you for, for sharing that. And I, I know when we had, when the Alameda fire started. Chief Thompson, was there anything that was a lesson learned, maybe out of paradise that, that we had put into place? Or that we'd learned that we were not as prepared as we thought we were?
Well, there was several lessons learned. Really, we had never experienced any fire like that ever in our area. And really to this date, the Alameda fire is the largest urban conflagration that's ever happened in the state of Oregon. And so that's nothing to be proud of. But, but what that is, is we learned a lot from that. And so there's, there's going to be incidents and there's going to be times where the weather and nature and science and, and just the way that fire behavior is, they're going to win. They're going to win. And so there's, it's up to us to do our due diligence to stay prepared. You know, we hear about fire season, we see the commercials, but you know, do we really do anything about it? And I will say that I think we take some of it, some things for granted, and we think it's not going to happen to us. But we all know that it can't happen to us and it will happen to us because it has. And so I just want to, to really, the number one lesson learned, be prepared, know your surroundings. Do what you need to do to take care of yourself and your family, because that helps your fire department, that helps your police department, that helps your neighbors. If you personally have yourself in order and have your business in order, so have a plan. Know that, no options. Don't just have a plan A. You need to have a plan B and a plan C. Please. And the other thing is lesson learned is pay attention. Listen to the advertisements, sign up for the, the text messages, sign up for the emails. Look at who puts out your information. Please look at trusted information. Okay. Social media can be great, but it also can be really bad at times. Okay. Know the source of your information. Look for your emergency management pages. Look for your official city webpages. Look or, or social media pages. Look for your fire department page. Okay. Know the information where you're, that you're looking at. Don't just take for granted. You see somebody post something on Facebook. All right. Please go to trusted sources for your information. Hang on, please. I'll lose my train of thought and then I'm on, then I'm done. The, if you have questions, your fire department, your emergency managers, we're here to help you. Okay. Please call us because we want to help you. We can send folks to your house. We can talk to you on the phone. We can help guide you through how to sign up for Jackson Alerts. We can help walk you through how to find information. You can come to the office. We can hand you pamphlets and guides with really good information on it. So that's kind of on my soapbox about what we learned about being prepared. You know, there's several other things that we learned. Communication. We didn't have great interoperability. We didn't work well with all of our neighbors. You know, since then, over the last two years, we've received $5.4 million in grant funds to enhance our radio communications, to enhance our apparatus, to enhance our equipment. We're better trained and the list can go on. But a lot of the support and the things that we're, we're now better prepared, we've done through grant dollars, which we're really proud of. And so when we're talking about development standards and road infrastructures and developing everything, those are, those are hard topics. Because whenever we're talking about those decisions, it's not just the fire department, it's not just public works. You know, it's all of us working together, collaborating. And sometimes that's going to be a policy decision that we're going to have to, staff will have to go ask council to, to consider. But it's our responsibility to take those things to council. So they're aware of it. That's kind of why we have jobs is to inform and advise. And so we work really well together as a city. We meet monthly. We have what if Wednesdays, we do tabletops, we do different scenarios. And, you know, we've had several tabletop exercises of what happens when the eastern hills of Medford are on fire? What are we going to do? What is fire going to do? What's public works going to do? What is police department going to do? You know, what does the EOC look like? How, who's going to be in the EOC? We have those conversations all the time. We didn't do that before. We didn't. And that's a lesson learned, you know? And so we bring back those experiences. And that's when we look at, okay, when this development comes in, is it safe? You know, what can we do? You need to, please understand that there's only so much that we can do because of state law. And that's where our friend down on the other end, Mr. Eric Mitten, guides us. And so sometimes some of the things we would like to do, maybe we simply can't because state law and the legislation that wins the day sometimes. So.
Okay. Hey, just a sec. So we have three more questions that came in. Let's take one more follow-up on that answer, sir. You had your hand up.
It's kind of all of comments, more surface diversity in general. I've got a couple of questions and a couple of dates I'd like to read off, everybody would have a pair with me on it.
Well, you know, if, do you have those in the, in the form?
I don't, I don't have those form. I just haven't made that.
Okay, let's get him a form and then we'll go ahead and get some of these others wiped out and then we'll get you taken care of. So the first one is going all the way back to Main Street. And is there going to be an opportunity for, for public input? Mr. Wild, you have a calendar on this?
So right now council has asked us, the public works to develop a range of alternatives. And as, as they talked about before, that large range where we started like 15 different alternatives and now have been narrowed down to three. In July, we're going to be presenting the details of those alternatives. And Nick talked about some of these are going to cost more than others. And some of like turning it back into two-way street, a lot of signal work, there's a lot of the bump outs on the sidewalks are going to have to be addressed. There's a lot of things. And so we're doing an analysis on that. We're hoping that after July, we will have a better feel for what council is thinking. And I believe that at that point, we will have some sort of public participation where we're asking for, for input. If any council members disagree with that, please speak up.
Who's disagreeing?
Yeah, with council's approval, I would just like to make sure that we include the go back to the way it was option. And I'm not sure that's part of the three, but if we could make it four, I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community that that's the way they would like to have it.
So we haven't formalized our plans yet as council on how we're going to engage the public. But I guarantee you, I mean, I am one of eight counselors, but I think I watched four heads nod here. So I, I would, I would pretty much bet my bottom dollar that we're going to have a, a public process around this. As Kevin said before, this is not our street. It's not, doesn't belong to the eight of us. This is Medford's Main Street and Medford has to have a voice in this process. Part of why I think, I, I've heard from a lot of people frustration that like, well, you guys all agree it's wrong. So why aren't you going to fix it? Well, we could just tear it all back out and make it back to the way it was and go through a slow process about redoing it. But to me, that seems cost effective. I know Kevin really wants to have that done. So I don't, I don't begrudge Kevin's opinion. I just, for me, if that's the conclusion of what the city and the people want, then that's what we should do. That's our job as, as council. If really what the public wants is we put all these options on the table and they say we want to keep it the same way it is. I, I don't like it the way it is now, but again, it's not my street. It's the people's street. This is Medford's Main Street and that's the way it should stay. So I, I am definitely, I believe that this is going to be a robust public process. It means it's going to be slow though. It's going to take us some time, you know, July is just around the corner, but then that's going to give us options and we got to do a public process. Government is slow, but sometimes it's good that government is slow. And I think this is a case where I would much rather have us move slowly and choose the right thing to do for Main Street, or at least what is the right thing for us today? Rather than try to rush into something that isn't going to, that's going to create just as much complaints and concerns and problems. And the fact that everyone seems to have their eye on Main Street today, what a good time. Let's take advantage of that interest and scrutiny. And now let's come up with something that's going to be really good for the community. So that's how I think this is process is going to play out. And I think there's going to be a lot of public conversation about what happens with Main Street. Once we have sort of our seed ideas in place and we can begin that public process.
That's definitely the case. You know, we're not eight autocrats. We're here doing the best we can to represent the interests of 88,000 people. That's 11,000 people per person. That's a lot of work. And we all have our backgrounds, but I'm not a street, I'm, I'm a DA. I'm not a street engineer. Nick is a businessman. Kevin's a teacher. We're not masters of how to do streets. We need to hear from all of you. Please email me. I'm very happy to hear from any one of you, or any of us are. Because I can't possibly know everything that you want. And it's not what I do all day. So I'm not going to be an expert about what you want unless you tell me. So Ben Franklin, when he was asked after the Constitutional Congress, what kind of government we, do we have? He said, it's a republic if you can keep it. And the way you keep it is to know what's going on and to talk to us and also to take care of your neighbors. And it's really on all 88,000 of us. And if, if we don't do it, we don't get to keep it. And that's on us. Not on the eight of us, but on the 88,000 of us.
All right. So can you speak to earthquake preparedness specifically? We are at risk of getting cut off from resources from I-5 and other routes and all resources will direct to Portland. So we're largely on our own. What's the plan? There is a big plan.
So several years ago, the state recognized the, the trouble that we had with earthquake preparedness and specifically with our structures. The huge majority of structures in Oregon were built at a time that most of them are, you know, 30, 40, 50 years old. We didn't even have earthquake standards in Oregon because earthquakes were something that happened in Southern California and they didn't happen here. So the huge majority of our bridges are not built to a standard that would, that would withstand a large earthquake. So the state conducted a large project to look at how do you provide goods and services to the state if we were to have a massive subduction, subduction zone earthquake. Medford is blessed with a wonderful structure going through the middle of town on Interstate five called the Viaduct, everybody's favorite. The Viaduct is not built to withstand the kind of earthquake that is predicted. And the cost of making it so is so expensive, what the state has decided is their, the lifeline routes are going to come down Interstate five. When you get to Eugene, it'll cut over to Highway 97 and go down 97. We threw a fit down here and said, that is not acceptable. You cannot just abandon us and you have to take some steps to address it. So there was a package that was put before ODOT to where they took Highway 140 and made Highway 140 a resilient route. So they addressed the bridges on Highway 140. They addressed some slide potentials. So the lifeline route will then come down here. We're also taking additional measures to, to strengthen our bridges. But we do have an issue down here because the, the expense of fixing the viaduct is so expensive that it's, it's almost prohibitive in with current, the current financial situation. But steps are being taken. There is a plan on how to get us goods and services and it comes down I-5 over to Highway 97, then over Highway 140 to our area. The viaduct's the problem. One good news is a project that all of you are sick of, I'm sure. Foothill Road is, is in the process of being completed. Foothill Road is going to be a beautiful belt line around our area. So if we were to have a big earthquake and the viaduct was to fail, we are not paralyzed on north-south movement because Foothill Road is being built to a standard that's going to be able to withstand an earthquake. And it's going to provide a nice north-south route to provide that resiliency.
Yes. And specifically connects to 140, which connects to 97. So that's the route there. Okay. Two questions here. Let's, let's do number two first. What are the antennas that have been sprinkled around town? What are the intent, oh, what are the antennas that have been popping up all around town?
What you're seeing, they're about the size of a light pole. They're sometimes along the side, the side of a sidewalk. Is that what folks are talking about here? I've seen some nods. So those are what are known as 5G small cell units. They're heavily regulated by the federal government. And so they are basically the next generation of cell signal for smartphones. The previous version of communication 4G used a few large towers around town. 5G uses more but smaller towers. So we don't have local control over, do we allow this or not? The federal government heavily regulates that space. And so we are working, we are permitting them where they are allowed to go by federal law. That is something that, that goes in and we have very limited control one way or the other. The plus side is they do allow for a better cell signal, et cetera. Some people don't like them. I will say that specifically there's, I know that there's some debate in terms of are these, are these healthy or not? That is a 100% federal law question. The federal government has stated that is not something where local jurisdictions can make a decision one way or another on that. So for better, for worse. So for better, for worse, there's federal uniformity on that. But those those signals you're seeing are basically the next generation uh, cellphone communication towers.
How many are there right now?
A lot. I, I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't know, but I, the only thing I would add to that is, as Eric said, the cell providers kind of say, we want one in this area. Public Works provides the permits because then sometimes it conflicts with a signal or it conflicts with some something else. So we say, no, you can't put it there. But um, in general, we do have to allow them and but we do have some say so on the specific location. They're almost all of them in the in the right of way. So they're located on the on the sidewalks, on poles. A lot of times you wouldn't even notice them because it looks like an luminaire, a street light, but it has a little antenna on top.
Okay, and then also, if the electrical grid goes down for an extended period, how does that affect water and other services? Um, Nick, do you want to take water as a liaison or do you want? Okay, so the way the water system is set up is that um, we have, we have two different sources for it. But basically we go from the source to um, reservoirs. So water is stored up high. And all of that system, the system for the water treatment, the water to get the water into the reservoir. Those are all um, have have backup on those, whether it's a natural gas or whether it's a diesel generator that that runs those. So we pump up to the reservoirs itself. The reservoirs are sized for an extended period of time. And then when it actually gets distributed down into the homes and to the fire hydrants and all that, that's running off of gravity. So it's built in with redundancy to get it to the to the reservoirs. The there's uh, redundancy in the reservoirs itself for for size and volume. And uh, and basically that's how it all ends up back down into the uh, into the into the distribution system.
So the mayor talked about the water system and an emergency like that, having water is super important, but then the water has to go someplace. And so the sewage system in the city is primarily a gravity system. When you flush your toilet, it, everything goes downhill. We do have some pumps, um, pump stations. Um, Rogue Valley Sewer has several pump stations. All of those have a backup generator on them for an extended period of time where you can run that system. So water should continue and sewer should continue. The one exception of that is if you have a massive earthquake that disrupts them breaks all the lines, then you could have an issue there. The one other thing I would add is over the last couple of years, we have added battery backup to many of our traffic signals in town. Um, the most critical uh, heavy volume traffic signals, um, like you just came through one at Highland and Barnett down by the freeway. Those all have battery backup on them now. And so when power goes out, the signal doesn't go black, the signal continues for some time period.
John, um, to ask a question because I'm kind of curious, I think it's a really interesting question. What is the like time horizon that we are prepared for in terms of those backup generators? You know, if we really had the, we all got cut off, no fuel in, no, no natural gas, like how long are we running?
So there's not a single answer for that. Each generator has a tank, a storage tank, but you can refill those tanks. And the bottom line is if we have fuel, which we do have reserve fuels and and uh, in the city, as long as we have fuel, we can keep feeding those generators and we can keep them operating indefinitely. Um, the other thing I would add is the wastewater treatment plant, which treats all of our sewage, also has a very large generator with a very large tank with a high capacity to keep the treatment plant operating as well.
Right, that's super. Um, just a moment, sir, did you have an opportunity to get your question in? I didn't see it. About four? Well, how about you give us one?
So you might as well go over a couple of dates really quick, briefly.
Okay.
So speaking to the whole emergency thing, um, everybody knows nine eleven, that whole incident happened with nineteen individuals. And oh, two, I'm sure everybody here knows about the DC sniper. That was two individuals. Two thousand and four, there was a school in Russia that was attacked by thirty two individuals. And away the hotel in Mumbai was attacked by ten individuals. Um, only one of those was arrested, so you can kind of figure out what happened to the rest of them. Um, and twenty eighteen, there was one individual at the Las Vegas concert shooting who did all that damage. In twenty nineteen, the hotel in Kenya was attacked by five individuals. Not a single one of them was ever injured by law enforcement or military. And twenty three, the Nova Dance Festival was executed by a hundred to a thousand perpetrators. And then in twenty four, the Russian music hall um, was attacked by eleven individuals. They say some of them were attacked or were arrested, or else some escaped. Um, all my questions kind of go within this theme of if a massive casualty producing event happens here in the valley, what is the city's response or the county's response? Um, specifically if the power grid, communications, things like that were attacked first as like a first stage, second stage type of thing? And then what if those individuals are wearing first responder, city official uniforms like we saw in many of these events? Which causes mass havoc on first responders specifically not being able to get that information out to the public? And who is the good guys?
Right, that's a um, an interesting point. I think you sort of um, almost tie. This, so part of that's going to be, I think, challenging for us to do because you're really talking about some homeland security issues on on a lot of that. But however, response during mass casualty event would be uh, something we could probably take on at least here with some thought about how we would coordinate that with uh, I think the first step would be the governor's office, but I'll let uh, let our, let our staff kind of take a crack at that.
I feel like that's a me question, so. And I was gonna make a smart aleck comment and say maybe we just need to talk outside afterwards, but uh, no, I mean, honestly, what we, we do what we can to be prepared. I mean, as a, as a valley, we have to work very closely with our partners, whether we're talking about fire response or any type of emergency service response. We're, we're limited to the amount of resources that we have to respond to an, to an emergency uh, expeditiously. So I mean, i- in regards to like an active shooter, an active assailant uh, event, we work very closely, not just with other police departments in the valley. But but we conduct exercises where we work with the fire department that that responds with us, the other emergency services, ambulances, et cetera, to respond. And and in some of those events, you know, to to locate and neutralize a threat as quickly as possible and then work on recovery efforts. So um, again, we, we also have federal partners that we work with. Um, you know, we're, we're a city of eighty eight thousand, but we're, we're. It's not like we don't have anything. We have, we have lots of act, we have lots of resources, we have lots of partnerships. So um, you know, all, all those things you brought up are things that we talk about, scenarios that we run through um, in our heads and and on tabletop exercises, et cetera. But I think the most important part is just working together and establishing partnerships and trying to be prepared for every scenario that we, we can in advance. Um, again, some of those are some, some very big um, issues that we could potentially face here, um, but nothing that we haven't discussed.
Are there strategies coming from your side of the house, from the state level, down to, you know, local populace to help send them ads? Get some information out to people if there is, you know, that sort of threat where people are pretending to be others that they're not. So, you know, if people here in this audience can identify, yes, you are the police, the individual to your left, he isn't. How, how would we know?
To be honest, I haven't really thought about that. But it's definitely something that we need to be considering.
Yeah, um, Aaron, do you have any thoughts just in general on mass casualty versus say a national security issue?
Yeah, I, I think a great thing that we need to look back is a year and a half ago, we partnered with, I think it was over forty agencies. I did a full scale exercise uh, with the school district where we did a mass casualty all the way to the, you know, reunification with the, with the students and how that would work. How media uh, would be notified. We did a press briefing. I mean, we, we went into a beautiful uh, almost a year long process with the school district preparing this and then a very long event and doing that. And that was including, like I said, not just regional partners, but state partners and federal partners were also involved in that. Um, you know, we, we can all come up with scenarios that, you know, man, I don't know what I would do. I think the key is again, uh, to make sure that we listen to their correct messaging. As Chief said, you know, when we are distributing messaging, know who's giving you the message. Um, and make sure it's a liable source. Alan, meet a fire, a great example of that. How many times did Home Depot burn down? I counted at least five. It didn't burn down, but is that kind of messaging and that kind of rumors keep on perpetuating itself? So again, know your source and know who you're getting the information from.
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to bring the conversation back to the fire issues up on East uh, Hillcrest area. Um, I know that there's been a lot of conversation about the hundred and sixty five acres that are a lot of people, a lot of people are rushing. And there's hundreds of homes downwind of that. And we know how hard the wind can blow in August, September. And that looks to a lot of us like a Palisades event ready to happen. And the fire breaks that are going through those hundred and sixty five acres is a fuel. As you've already said earlier, ambers fly by or blocks and blocks, long way. And so a hundred foot fire break uh, may not be sufficient to address a major fire event coming from that hundred and sixty five acres. And there's nobody available to get up there because there are other parts of the state or county dealing with the fire issue. And they can't get up there quickly, water runs out and people, well, you can imagine the uh, those, all those homes that are downwind of that fire event that would happen. And the calamity that could turn into.
So just real quick, how many people feel like they're at serious wildfire risk? Um, and how many are signed up for community alerts? And how many, how many have a go back? Okay, so I think we're fairly prepared in here. Um, again, we kind of tie back to some of our, our, our building code standards on defensible space. But also, uh, Chief had pointed out, there are specific requirements, particularly around as development goes for fire break requirements. Is that correct, Chief?
So in our municipal code, there are uh, fire break requirements. So um, for, I believe it's properties over one acre, the entire uh, property has to have vegetation trimmed down below. I believe it's six or eight inches. Um, properties over an acre, acre, uh, there has to be a thirty foot fuel break and then a hundred foot fuel break adjacent to homes. Um, that's what's in our code right now. You know, there could be a policy discussion on uh, potentially changing that. Um, but that's, that's what the code says and what what the code allows right now. It's, it's um, a little bit of a challenge um, locally. So uh, May first, there's a requirement um, to have that vegetation or hazardous fuels uh, removed or mitigated. So each year uh, Medford Police um, sends out letters to property owners to um, get them to clear those fuels or give them that heads up a- ahead of May first. Um, we, we partner with them, um, especially on some of the larger properties um, uh, to kind of find some uh, solutions for those because some of the larger properties can be um, a challenge. Um, especially with uh, the requirement to have the, the vegetation cleared. Um, and then we get kind of that rain that happens somewhere between May and July. Um, and puts moisture into the ground and then the vegetation grows. And then we're kind of in a challenging situation of um, do we have somebody clear that vegetation and put that community at? Leave it and not take that risk. Um, we have those conversations every year. Um, and sometimes there's things that we can do depending on how late or early it is in the year. Um, but it's, it's a challenging conversation that does uh, does come up quite frequently. Um, I will say uh, we're pretty fortunate to have a pretty awesome team. Um, really good resources, really good support. Um, and we do a pretty darn good job most of the time uh, getting ahead of fires before uh, they become a, a, a significant issue. And I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that, Chief?
I, I'd like to real quick, if you don't mind, Chief. Don't wait for the city. If you have, if you have a fear, those who raised their hands about they fear wildfire, uh, there's a great pamphlet that Medford created, uh, ready, set, go. It's all about defensible space. It's about vegetation ideas of what to have that don't burn or aren't as combustible. Um, if you are feeling at risk, take some steps. Um, you know, don't wait till legislation or to ordinances to catch up to what needs to be done. Um, we rely on you to be able to notice what your property is and what your risks are. So I, I encourage you, if you feel at risk, reach out to us. We've been more than help, happy to help walk you through what you should do.
Well said, um, that's exactly what I was going to say, but I, 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 great minds, that's right. But also, um, in addition to your fire department, we have uh, agreements with ODF, Oregon Department of Forestry, the Southwest District. We have, we have contracts in place for service up on Prescott. Uh, we have, we have available availability to air assets, bulldozers. All, all of, all of that uh, equipment beyond our brush trucks and our engines that you see every day in your stations. We have the ability to get helicopters and air support, uh, aircraft. Um, uh, we call it heavy iron, but that's the bulldozers. We have access to all of that. And so we, we stay in constant communication uh, with our partners and ODF. Um, and we train with them, we, we communicate, um, we're, we're dispatched out of the same center. Um, so, so we're, we stay in connection with them.
All right, I saw some hands go up. How about you?
Question, I definitely have a little want to talk about the topic, but there are eighty eight thousand people in the city of Medford and there are over two thousand homeless people. So I just want to talk about, you mentioned earlier that it is a vulnerable population when it comes to wildfires. He, um, but they're all resilient, so they build these campfires on the freeway and we're clearing the livability team. My question is, the warming and cooling shelters right now, the temperatures that they're set at for, let's say the warming shelter, it's currently at twenty five degrees or thirty two degrees in extreme weather. I'm a student nurse, so I know that evidence base shows that cold injuries pass at forty degrees. And so I just want to know who is making these decisions and are they using evidence base in making these things possible?
So the, the, I know that the current code on those temperature limits um, were. Would, would I, would I be able to tell you the exact source and reference from them? I can't, but I know that that was um, certainly vetted out. I don't know, Eric Mitten, if you have any remembrance on that?
I'm pretty sure it also matches up with the plot.
So it's uh, I would have to look back in terms of the exact source of where those numbers are from. I can also tell you that when you're talking about um, extreme weather shelters versus a seasonal warming shelter, there is a balance involved. So the extreme weather shelter is based on volunteers and there is a limited, it's run by access and there is a limited pool of volunteers. And if they use up all the volunteers they have when it's thirty five degrees, when it hits twenty five degrees, they may not have enough volunteers left to um, go ahead and have the staffing necessary to open. So there's, there's a balance involved there, almost a form of triage. So um, there's also, you know, if we were to have a shelter that opened at when it hit forty degrees instead of twenty five, that would not be a severe event shelter. It would be a seasonal warming shelter. That is a different model that needs a different funding model. And so that's, that's a bigger policy discussion to have in terms of whether from a se- a severe event shelter to pivot to that. But a severe event shelter is meant to take care of the worst case scenarios, not to staff up for a seasonal need. So we have tools in our code available for, for um, seasonal shelters. The city of Medford alone, um, that's something where we would be looking for a community partner um, who wanted to help run one of those. But we do have tools in our code. Um, if a partner was interested in looking at a seasonal shelter as opposed to a severe event shelter.
I just follow up question, I guess my thing is, it's no like secret that the weather been changing here in the valley. It's been caught in several, older quarters. If I'm just saying. If I'm just saying, when were these, you know, temperatures created and when would the last move look at it? I don't know, makes a decision on it, but I, I've also talked to access about it and they just try to keep saying that it's up to the city when they get to open. And if they have all the volunteers in the world, that is still up for them. So their next thinking on it. And I have seen the three odds, but
So I think what Eric was, was trying to distinguish was the difference between a seasonal shelter or or a constant shelter and the emergency shelter. So emergency shelter, uh, basically there is power granted to the city manager to allow those to be, to be opened under severe events. We would also allow warming and cooling. If a partner came to us and said, here's our operation plan, here's how we're going to provide that service, there are provisions in our code to allow that. Currently, right now, if you've spoken to access, they, I, I see requests for volunteers constantly, particularly anytime we get extreme weather. So if they told you they had all the volunteers, I find that I, that's not been my experience with that, but I think with um, what I'm hearing from you is uh, number one, uh, a willingness to help and serve on that and also maybe help uh, find others that can do the same. And then that's going to be an important part to, to making these things function.
My property, quarters, Lazy Creek that goes all through, we have a lot of oak trees that we can't, that I can't get any, no one will take them down because, because they border so close to Lazy Creek. How do you fight that? When they're definitely a fire hazard because now they're thirty and forty feet tall, so they're just, there's never a fire.
All right, any specific response to Lazy Creek and vegetation management? Maybe we're going to go up and take a look at it.
The old, yeah. I was gonna say, the only thing I would add is um, repairing areas get, get difficult. Um, so in our state, um, streams, repairing areas take priority. Um, so flooding um, in those areas takes priority over wildfires. So based on state law, um, so for example, if you went to develop a property, um, protecting repairing areas takes precedence over, over defensible space and clearing between your house and a stream. Um, so I think a lot of that is established by, by state law and someone, please correct me if I'm wrong on that. There's, there's local state um, ordinances regarding this. The, the point I was going to make is Public Works takes responsibility for the in-channel conveyance of water. So when there's trees and and especially the willows grow in the channel, we'll go try to remove those so we can make sure that we convey the water. Outside of that, almost all of these properties you're talking about are private property. And so it would be you complying with local codes and whatever an harvest is willing to do for you.
All right, so we've kind of uh, ran a little bit over here with the Q and A. I want to uh, thank you guys all for coming out and the great questions and hopefully, hopefully we learned something and you guys learned something. If you uh, will be around, sticking around, feel free to come on up if you want to uh, just follow up with anything and otherwise, thanks for coming.